February 17th, 2022, meeting of the Woodbridge Township Board of Education will please come to order. Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Bourdain.
Here.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Yeah, here.
Mr. Molnar.
Here.
Ms. Perez.
Here.
Mr. Sedana.
Here.
Mr. Trebusser.
Here.
And Mr. Velez.
Here.
Mr. Secretary, as required by the Sunshine Law, please read the notice of meetings.
Thank you, Mr. President. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place there posted as follows: On January 11th, 2022, emailed to the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger, and the Municipal Clerk's Office, posted in Ross Street School #11, and the Board of Education Administration Building, also published on the school district website.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Molnar, please read the closed session statement.
Thank you, Mr. President. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board must go into closed session in order to discuss subjects exempt from the public portion of our meeting. The discussions to be held in closed session will be regarding personal matters. Any information regarding the closed session discussion will be released to the public when the reasons for discussing these matters in closed session no longer exist.
Thank you, Mr. Molnar. Do I have a... Mr. Molnar, I have a motion by Mr. Molnar. Do I have a second? I have a second by Mr. Trebusser. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. Please rise for a salute to the flag and a moment of silence. Do I have a motion to reconvene?
Some motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Trebusser, a second by Ms. Bourdain. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Bourdain.
Here.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Molnar.
Here.
Ms. Perez.
Here.
Mr. Sedana.
Here.
Mr. Trebusser.
Here.
Mr. Velez.
Here.
Will someone make a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meetings?
Motion.
Second.
Are there any additional corrections? I have a motion by Mr. De La Pietro, a second by Ms. Bourdain. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. Mr. Secretary, please state for the record any notices of bids received by the Board.
Mr. President, on February 15th, 2022, we opened PSA Project #8945 for mechanical system upgrades at various schools.
Thank you. Dr. Massimino, please state for the record the superintendent's report for the month of January 2022.
Mr. President, I present the student registers and fire drill report, suspension reports for elementary and secondary schools, bond threat reports, and reports of the attendance officers.
Thank you, Dr. Massimino. Dr. Massimino, please introduce our student representative, Hannah Holness.
Hannah Holness is an extraordinary young woman who is extremely ambitious, motivated, and compassionate. She currently ranks seven in the class size of 415 students at Woodbridge High School with a 4.2 GPA. Hannah is such a determined and hardworking student both in and out of the classroom. She has taken many of the AP and college-level courses that Woodbridge has to offer. Hannah participates in many extracurricular activities. She is a member of the National Honor Society, Student Council, American Sign Language Society, and freshman mentors, just to name a few. She also participates in concert band, art club, El Dorado, and drama club. Hannah finds volunteering her time within her community very rewarding as well. She volunteers at the local library with the summer reading program. She is also an advocate for the program Give a Paw, animal welfare group, as well as Operation Smiles. Hannah is an all-around amazing young lady who is always looking to help and give back to others. Hannah has been accepted into Barnard College, Columbia University, and Fordham University. She plans on attending Barnard College in the fall to major in English. Hannah, thank you for joining us.
Good evening, everyone. It is an honor and privilege to be here and present to you the activity lists of our elementary and middle schools along with Woodbridge High School. In Schools 4 and 5, they had their day of graduation and winter concert. Black History Month activities occur throughout the month, and Grade 5 students participated in a Martin Luther King Jr. essay assignment. The entire school also participated in a Heart the Hallway activity and took part in the World Read a Loud Day activities in their classrooms, and read to their principal. Students and families also participated in family math and family science activities. In School 9, the 4th and 5th grade chorus concert was held the first week of February at Woodbridge Middle School. Black History Month activities were done in each class by grade level, and there was school-wide participation in the Township's Have a Heart food drive. They would also like to thank their PTO for their winter break activity of snowflake decorating. School 9 also had their day of graduation on the last week of January, and on the 90th day of school, they had a halfway day and celebrated with fractions and lessons involving halves throughout the day. They also participated in the Kids' Heart Challenge to benefit the American Heart Association, and on Tuesday, February 22nd of 2022, they will have lessons dealing with twos and pairs. In School 11, they had school-wide Black History Month activities by grade and started an extended school day program in February. Grade 4 students participated in the Heroes and Cool Kids program run by Ford's Middle School, and Grade 5 students completed Martin Luther King Jr. essays. Their PBSIS had very successful raffles to celebrate positive behavior, and their lunchtime clubs are in full action and being enjoyed by all students. School 11's 2nd and 3rd graders are also participating in a successful junior chorus. For School 14, Black History Month activities occurred schoolwide by grade, and their extended school day program started in February. Grade 4 students participated in the Heroes and Cool Kids program run by Ford's Middle School, and Grade 5 students completed Martin Luther King Jr. essays. Their family programs will start in late February, and they have also had their day of graduation. The 5th grade class also took a trip to Woodbridge High School for a concert program. In School 19, students are working on their Black History Month activities for the Wall of Fame, and on February 3rd, the students participated in Togetherness Thursday. Their PBSIS indoor snow day celebrated their students' positive behavior, and on February 15th, they celebrated the 100th day of school. On February 22nd, they will celebrate Tuesday by wearing tutus, ties, or dressing as a twin. Their Grade 4 students have participated in the Heroes and Cool Kids program run by Ford's Middle School, and the family writing program will begin this month for 2nd graders and the 1st graders, sponsored a soup for the Super Bowl this month. In School 25, to celebrate Random Acts of Kindness Week from the 14th to the 18th, students and staff will participate in their school-wide Kindness Rocks project, which will be displayed as part of their landscape in the front of the school for years to come. Grade 4 students participated in the Heroes and Cool Kids program run by Ford's Middle School. In schoolwide, there were Black History Month activities per grade level. The Student Council promoted the Woodbridge Township Have a Heart food drive to their school community and will be participating this month in the Kids' Heart Challenge to benefit the American Heart Association. In School 28, the Student Council conducted a variety of activities, including Denim Day for breast cancer awareness, Jeans for Troops Day, Breakfast with Santa, and a Have a Heart food drive. Their DEI activities include their anti-racism wall, Martin Luther King essay contest, Black History Month, Native American Week, and Spanish Heritage Month. Thanks to their SAU funding, they are now at a one-to-one Chromebook distribution for all students. Mrs. Maisak, their vocal music teacher, retired on February 1st, and we wish her all the best during her years of retirement. Their family math and science programs have been conducted, and they are moving forward with their homework club, lunch/brunch sessions, PALS, and IALAC programs. At Avonel Middle School, their updated media center now includes new iMac computers, a video production area with a full-size green screen, and an 82-inch 4K presentation display. Their virtual family literacy night gave families the opportunity to work and learn together, and their virtual family book club buffet promoted their students' love of reading. They also held a month-long celebration of Black History Month, and their Student Council coordinated their school-wide participation in the Have a Heart food drive. The Avonel Middle School girls' basketball team also made it all the way to the finals. Their National Junior Honor Society and Community Service Club led their effort in collecting supplies and donations for a variety of charitable organizations, all culminating their Day of Giving celebration. Avonel Middle's Sidekicks mentoring program visited elementary schools around the town, and the school looks forward to their upcoming Family STEM Night. Avonel Middle School's Maria Nana was selected as a New Jersey exemplary educator by the New Jersey Department of Education. At Ford's Middle School, Black History Month was celebrated by creating projects which enabled all students to learn about prominent figures and important events in Black history. Ford's Middle School and Colonia High School will have a Day of Dialogue on the 23rd, and both schools have been members of the CJCEE, Central Jersey Consortium for Excellence and Equity, for the past two years. The Music Department attended a choral festival at Woodbridge High School today, and two students were selected for the Junior Youth in Government Day on the 11th at the Board Office. Homework and tutoring club has been a success, and a new club for crocheting began today yesterday, the 16th, while a TV club is in the works. The Student Council is promoting the Have a Heart food drive and collected food until the 11th, and every week, there is an extended homeroom where students are provided with activities addressing SEO, social and emotional learning, as well as promoting DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion. At Woodbridge High School, the English Department completed essay work and projects to participate in the district-wide Black History Month celebration. The literature and film class students became movie critics and learned how to properly write a film review. NJDOE approved 65 math portfolio appeals to satisfy a graduation requirement, and our Student Diversity Council has teamed up to develop notable contributors and contributions to our history by highlighting people and events on the morning announcements and on the school website. Our Black Student Union members created a bulletin board highlighting musicians in honor of Black History Month, and also created a spirit week. Monday was Motivational Monday, where purple represents power, loyalty, and abundance. And so, students were asked to wear purple to represent the richness that diversity brings into our school community. Tuesday was Team Tuesday, where students were encouraged to wear their favorite sports attire in support of mental health awareness. Wednesday was Wardrobe Wednesday, where students were asked to show off their finest threads. Thursday was Throwback Thursday, where students could represent their favorite fashion trends over the decades. Finally, Friday was Unity Friday, where our students were asked to wear red, black, or WHS apparel to show bear and support, not only for Black students, but all students who belong to different races, ethnicities, and backgrounds. The Social Justice Club and International Culture Club teamed up to host our annual Peace Week to promote diversity, equity, and inclusion. The Chinese Honor Society sold international candy grams and created an informative bulletin board in honor of Lunar New Year, and a new chapter of the TRIAM Music Honor Society was chartered in 2021 at Woodbridge High School, signifying our school's recognition of the importance of the arts in the development of a comprehensive educational program. We would also like to congratulate Kevin Catalon and Isabella Rosano on being accepted into the CJMEA Region 2 chorus, where Kevin was the top scorer, section leader, and one of eight singers to perform the National Anthem at the start of the concert. We would also like to congratulate Nicole Galicia, who made the regional percussion ensemble the Allstate Band, and is the first barren performer to make Allstate in over 15 years. Five students, Sarah Paharo, Samantha Govina, Claudia Marie Mercid, Aria Shaw, and Tara Mahone, will be competing in the Virtual New Jersey Research Science Fair on March 18th, and the AP Chemistry Class will be competing in the Chemistry Science Olympiad in March as well. Fifty-one students completed 56 assessments for the SEAL of Bileiteracy, and WHS is one of the 26 public high schools to earn the Female Diversity Award for Advanced Placement Computer Science Principles from the College Board. Now for some good college news. Senior Jake Vasquez was accepted into Princeton University. I Hannah Holness was accepted into Barnard College of Columbia University. Senior Kasani Thomas received a Presidential Scholarship from Delaware State University. Students completed Valentine cards as part of Valentines for Veterans and were given to the Menlo Park Veterans Home. Mr. Torrell and Mr. Lynch directed our WHS drama in a successful livestream production of the murder mystery And Then There Were None on January 11th, where 30 actors and technicians performed wearing masks, and a wonderful and mysterious evening was enjoyed by all. Performance dates for the upcoming WHS Spring Musical Kiss Me Kate are Thursday through Saturday, March 24th to the 26th at 7:00 p.m., and Sunday, March 27th at 2:00 p.m. To conclude this portion of the meeting, Woodbridge High School was granted a charter for the Math Honor Society Mu Alpha Theta. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Hannah. That was very impressive. Tonight, you're welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting, but if you have to leave, we won't be offended at all.
Thank you.
Okay. The Woodbridge Township Board of Education welcomes and encourages active, productive, and respectful participation by members of the public, and seeks to protect the First Amendment rights of those who engage and exercise free speech at this Board of Education meeting. Members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil manner, with due respect for dignity and privacy of those whose legal rights may be impacted. Tonight, the Board will vote on item number 15 on the Finance and Insurance Agenda, which allows for the refunding bond ordinance. This resolution is being considered to refinance bonds at a lower interest rate to produce tax savings. The refunding bonds will be paid off in accordance with the original term and not extended. The Board will now open public hearing on this item. In accordance with Board Regulation 1100D and out of respect for other members of the community, please remember to limit your comments to no more than five minutes. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and the section of the township which you reside. Do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, are there any questions or comments from the Board on this item? I would like to take... Okay. We'll formally now close the public hearing regarding the refunding bond ordinance. The public is now invited to speak regarding the... I'm sorry. This evening, we have with us Mr. Andy Hojelik of O'Connor Davies, who will provide an overview of the 2021 Comprehensive Financial Report. Welcome, Mr. Hojelik.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board. Pleasure to be here. The review tonight is on your audit on the financial statements for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2021. We are behind a little bit in terms of timing. We've been delayed by the state in providing information that is necessary to go into your report in order to be in compliance with generally accepted accounting principles. And we just finally received those numbers last week, so they've been incorporated into your report in, you know, draft form. The report still needs to go one more review before we can actually finalize and submit a final report. But right now, all the numbers are in there, and we don't envision any changes or revisions of any significance to the report itself. It's just going to be more of like a nitpicking, making sure the words are correctly spelled and whatnot, that kind of thing. So anyway, I want to thank the administration for all the work that they provided with us to get the completed. Field work on the audit is roughly around four to five weeks, and then the cost of the review process and what have you. Currently, the, you know, the report has a unmodified opinion on your financial statements, and that means it's a clean opinion or that the... we agree with how the statements are presented on the basis of materiality. The district had a good year financially. All your variances were positive in terms of revenues and expenditures, and so, you know, the district sits in a strong financial position. There's funding in your capital reserve and your maintenance reserve. You sold bonds during the year for capital projects, and you have money there for your capital projects' needs. So the district is sitting in a good situation. We had a meeting with the Finance Committee the other night, and one of the questions that did come up was on your debt limit. And actually, so I just want to reiterate that. So your legal debt capacity is $476 million. That's a calculation based on your equalized valuation that's in the district. Right now, you have debt outstanding of $192 million, which leaves your remaining capacity of $284 million to go forward in terms of there any more projects you wanted to take on. Obviously, you retired debt during the year, so that does come down, but at this point, at 63021, that was your numbers. We also issued a report required by government auditing standards in terms of your internal controls, and there were no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses that were noted. We also issued an unmodified opinion on your compliance regarding what was determined to be your major programs for the year, and so that's all very good. And we had some minor comments in your management report, but there was nothing that rose to a level that required a finding of a recommendation or a corrective action plan. So with that, if there's any questions on the report or what have you, we'd be happy to entertain it. And obviously, anytime you have any questions of us, we're always glad to entertain questions from, you know, Board members, what have you, at any time.
Thank you, Mr. Hojelik.
Okay. Thank you very much. Beautiful gymnasium, by the way.
Thank you. The public is now invited to speak regarding the agenda agendas being presented this evening. As previously stated, members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil manner, with due respect for the dignity and privacy of those whose legal rights may be impacted. When you come to the microphone, please provide your name and the section of the township which you reside, along with a specific agenda and item number you wish to discuss. As per Regulation 1100D, comments must be limited to no more than five minutes. No responsibility given until you've completed your opportunity to speak.
Good evening, Tom Maris, Woodbridge, New Jersey. Just a point of clarification, if I can. Sorry I couldn't be here on January 20th. It just happened to be my birthday, and I had a better offer, and I took advantage of it, and I'm sorry I did miss the meeting. I did watch it on video, and I'm always glad that that is available for anybody, any member of the public to review. They can't be here, they can certainly watch it or livestream it. In any case, if I heard correctly, the format seems to have changed in that on items for discussion, all the items have to be covered at one time when somebody comes to the podium, and it's a five-minute window to cover everything?
That's correct.
Okay. Can you explain to me, then, if that's the case, how you feel as an elected official that your representative government, when you're shutting people out, and there's at least 13 or 14 pages alone on the policies and planning, how can any individual from the township come up and ask you to address any of the items? And you've got 10 items under items for discussion, and you think that's a fair, honest, open society? Really?
In the interest of time, that was the solution that we came up with.
It's always been that way, though.
You're always welcome to contact the Board members via telephone or email.
Time for whom? We get to talk to you once a month, face to face. So whose time? You can't give us that extra amount of time? I've never seen these meetings run longer than maybe 8 or 9 o'clock. They start, for you, at 6:00. I understand that. The public has brief amount of time. But if you really think that's fair, that's the American way. God help us.
Mr. Maris, are you done with your comments?
Sorry?
Are you done with your comments?
No. I'm just... That was the point I wanted to make.
Okay.
I do have a question on the number 10 on their finance and insurance that the Board of Education authorizes the business administrator. This goes back to SRECs. I'd like to know what the intended sale... How many are going to be sold? And what is the current market value? So what's the net gain to the township or to the Board? I'm sorry.
Just finish all your comments.
That's right. It still has to be all the questions. Again, there are so many that it'd be impossible to get them in here, let alone get an answer to them. People just have to learn that they have no representation at this meeting. Go ahead. Answer that one question if you will.
Mr. Wolferman?
Mr. Maris, this particular item on the agenda just allows me to go out and solicit pricing, so I would then be able to tell you that after we do solicit the pricing, and then determine how many SRECs we would choose to sell at this time.
Well, you must have some idea of how many and what the current market value. I believe that's posted daily, is it not?
It is posted daily. We have over 3,000. I believe the last I've seen is about $219 per SREC.
Okay. And we went into these SRECs at what valuation?
Say that again.
They had an original valuation when you did the SRECs. At what were they valued?
I don't remember the original...
Because there's a net loss there, or net gain, as the case may be, to whether we paid more or valued them more, and are now getting less.
The SRECs do go up and down. They fluctuate. These SRECs were actually only created in the past year, so for them to have a value other than prior to the year that they were created, they didn't exist. SRECs are generated on a monthly basis.
Correct.
So...
So when you sell them, you'll then know whether you've come out ahead or behind on the sale?
Well, the SRECs are credits that we would gain funds for.
Yes.
As far as the investment and comparing it to all that, that would have to take into account the amount of savings on our electric bills and many other things. So to say that the SREC itself had a different value wouldn't be accurate. The SREC value...
Well, I remember succinctly being a proponent of the SRECs when you had to redo the roofs. One of the few times I actually said, yes, go ahead, from my opinion, and go for SRECs. And there was a value in this town of around $600 per SREC. Now hearing that they're down to $200 and something, so there's a big whopping difference.
Mr. Maris, if you could just stop his time for one second. I want to give him a full amount of time. Mr. Maris, respectfully, the reason that we've been generally waiting for you and others to finish your time and not go back and forth is to make sure that you have all of your time to be able to address the Board. I mean, the Board... This Board wants to make sure that every member of the public has an opportunity to address it, and you have your full amount of time. You have your full five minutes. And so, the idea here is not just five minutes. Ultimately, you have 10 minutes if you include both periods. And in this meeting, you had theoretically 15 if you wanted to address on the issue of the bond, but nobody's trying to take your time. You have 10 minutes. Most Boards that I represent, in fact, I can't say that every Board in the state, but very few Boards, I don't personally know of any, that have separate public comment periods for every single agenda. This Board had done that for years. It's also a, you know, Board that wants to make sure that we have an efficient meeting, and we want to ensure that you have your voice and the Board is listening to what you're saying. But I just want you to understand, A, obviously, the Board wants to hear you, but B, and maybe more significantly, the reason I'm jumping in now, is by going back and forth with Mr. Wolferman, who's a, you know, good man and certainly answering your questions, it's cutting into your time, which is why I asked Ms. Rooney to press pause right now. It's cutting into your time that you have to address the Board. So you have five minutes for agenda items, and I'm sure that over the course of your time in addressing the Board, you'll be able to get your questions in as you review the agenda before you come to the meeting. But if not, five minutes is more than enough time to provide whatever you need. And then, of course, if there's other issues you have, you're always welcome, as you have, I know, of yourself in the past, to email the administration or Board members individually.
May I respond?
Quickly.
Before my time runs out?
Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I understand, and I've been here long enough to have been to many, many meetings when there were no limitations whatsoever. And then, at some point in time, the five-minute rule was invoked. It has been waffling back and forth between, I would say, Woodbridge Township as far as the Town Council is concerned, where they'll give you five minutes, and then they will cut you off, and if you don't get your answers back within the five minutes, too bad. Go sit down, go home, take your tail and put it between your legs, get out of here. So far, I've found the Board not to do that. But I want to know now, so that everybody would be aware, is if we're given five minutes, is that inclusive of the questions and the answers? Or do we have five minutes to ask questions and then get answers?
Once you finish your time, I'll answer that when you're done. Including... And I also interrupted you in the middle of your discussion with...
I was just going back to the fact that SRECs at one point in time had a valuation. We predicated a lot of the expenditures that were being made on the value of SRECs. We certainly did that with the roofs when we put those in. They dropped dramatically, and that's why I was asking where we stand on the value of these SRECs. What were they funding? What did we propose? They were worth at the time, so that would give us either a profit, if you will, a loss, or we stay neutral. And that was the question.
Okay. So, Mr. Wolferman, if you want to... Thank you. And, Mr. Wolferman, if you want to address... Finish what you were saying before. I apologize for interrupting you as well.
Yep. Yeah, Mr. Maris, in respect to the SRECs, which may have been, you know, at a higher rate when we first did the project, the SRECs weren't generated at that time. Some were, and they were sold throughout the entire process. We've been selling them periodically over the entire time we've had the solar. So for me to say that we've lost money on SRECs that weren't generated back in that time would kind of be not stating it correctly. As far as the project itself, it has generated a profit in both terms of selling SRECs, which we've sold for, I believe, over $1 million for each of the past several years, and also in the reduction of the cost of energy that schools need to use. So if you would want a bit more specific numbers, I wouldn't be able to provide them right now. right now.
No, I understand that. I can give you with an overview.
And to answer your other question, Mr. Maris, because I think that's what this board intends to do, you know, we try to answer the questions, we always have when you ask them. We may not answer them right when you're speaking, and although they did tonight, we do that out of respect for, I know you don't believe me when I say this, we're doing this out of respect for you, because those five minutes are your minutes.
Yes.
If you have, if you have five minutes' worth of comments or questions for the board, you should ask them, you should say them, and then we'll answer those questions that we can answer. So I think that's how this goes, and we won't cut into your time, but don't, please don't, I'm just speaking to you because you're at a lot of meetings, don't put us in a position where we're back and forth, because it's not fair to you. You should be able to speak your time, give your opportunity, or as you say, make your voice heard, and then the board listens to you, and then if there's something to say afterward, we will certainly do that after your five minutes are up.
My only comment to that is this items for discussion, if it's a one-way street, I only get to talk five minutes and ask, and then I have to wait. That's not a discussion.
Well, it's not a discussion.
That's a Q and A.
Well, that's, and we've gone through this over the years, too. You can have a seat now, but I'll just say...
And frankly, I don't think we care much what any other school district are doing. This is our school district.
Okay, I appreciate that.
This is our board.
But I just, you and I have gone through this over the years, and ultimately, just to put a cap on this, it's not a discussion, it's public comment, and when you make comments, or if you have questions, we'll try to answer them. But it's your time.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I also just wanted to jump in, just sort of on the transparency, if you will, in relation to our agendas, perhaps Dr. Massimino or Mr. Wolferman could speak to it. Our agenda is live online at least about 24 hours in advance. It's certainly posted on Facebook in advance. Is there sort of maybe a rule that we want to use for the public's benefit, that they have an opportunity to see the agenda before they get here? Is it roughly, sometimes we have a meeting the week of a Monday holiday, but generally the agendas are online by Wednesday, if I'm not mistaken, right? Dr. Massimino?
Correct.
Okay. So for the public, you know, so when you come here in the future, you know, under our current rules, if you want to take a look online, certainly on Facebook, our superintendent's office posts the agendas right there, and it's all there to see, with the exception of the personnel agenda, which is not available until generally we come down from closed session. So all of you members of the public, you have a head start to start flipping through the agendas, just want to make you all aware of that. Thank you, Dr. Massimino.
Good evening. Paul Lund, Hope Lund Section of Woodbridge Township. I just had, I know I'm not a regular here, and probably this has been discussed considerably before this time, but I'm curious, if I were to tell my students at the school I'm teaching what DEI is, in short, is there a simple way to explain? And, of course, it's been conflated with CRT and just...
This portion of the public meeting is for agenda, to speak about agenda items only. You'll have a chance later on to speak at any other item you'd like.
And again, new to the program. Is curriculum a part of the agenda items, or...
Do you have a question about a particular item in the curriculum section?
I thought DEI was, it's being weaved into the curriculum, so wouldn't that be a curriculum item?
Like we said when I opened the statement, if you could list the item you want to speak with, speak about?
Curriculum.
And the item number?
Eight B. Items for discussion, would that be accurate?
Which number?
Eight B, you said?
Yeah, I have it on the cover page of the agenda.
No, it's not just general curriculum issues, it has to be something, a specific agenda item. So is there number one through eight on the curriculum agenda that you have an issue about? Because this is, four of them have to do with Chromebooks and a number of other matters, but there's nothing related, as I can see, related to DEI. If you have a question about that, just come back in a couple of minutes, we'll be there soon enough.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Would, just, you could tell me quicker than I can search through this massive sheets. Is there anything about the mask policy going forward on the agenda?
Again, you'll be able to speak with that, if you have a question about that at the end of public session, then you can ask that question at that time.
Good evening, John Vitaric, Woodbridge. The Finance and Insurance, on 13, where is HVAC system responsible for the regulation of the heat airflow ventilation in the schools? Last year...
Finance and Insurance?
We had a problem with air conditioning and ventilation of the school system, and the question was said that time about the, it's going to be expensive to fix it. My question is, did we fix it, and how expensive was it? I don't know if you can answer this or not, because Mr. Anderson said over there that it was very expensive. And I would like to know, because it's a new system, new schools, it did not work. And most important, if it was fixed, who did it? And if somebody did mess it up, you should pay for it. I don't think you should charge some people, like they did at Junior High School, build the steps three times, and the people was awarded contracts, same guy every time. So that's another one. A second thing which is disturbed by item 14, where the New Jersey Department of Agriculture has identified the Woodbridge Township School District as having a high percentage of students potentially eligible for supplemental nutrition. Now, this is the New Jersey Agriculture thing. My question is, over the years, we know there are people that in need. Do we have any students that you, to your knowledge, special teachers would know, are any of those students really kind of desperate to have a right meal, right clothing, right things like that? If we do, it'd be shame not to find out for somebody. I'm sure most every time have it, but Woodbridge, we got money for everything else, and it would be shame to, if somebody else tells us that our students are in need of nutrition. So please answer me, I mean, you've got a good people, and I'm kind of proud what you did with the decision to change the people to the food. But again, you know, people being so-called disadvantaged, or what you might call them, they're innocent, it's not their fault. So maybe somebody cannot take care of and provide for them, I think you choose, from teachers on, to identify the students they need and help them before somebody else steps in and tell you what you need. So I think it's embarrassment. And that's only two questions I want to ask, so please do something about it. But again, people that do some work, are they qualified to do the work for the school? People that, you should not pay them back and forth, are you bonded? They should be responsible for going on. And this is all I ask, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vitaric. Mr. Wolferman?
Yes. Mr. Vitaric, your first question was about item number 13, the HVAC system at Woodbridge High School. That was a decision made to cool the school and have better HVAC system. There was nothing, per se, broken, we just wanted to upgrade it and give the students a better learning environment. In terms of the cost, I believe you asked about that, the cost was somewhere around $18 million, which we've paid for over several years. And this particular item on the agenda is us getting some of that money back through a grant opportunity. For item number 14, this is another grant that provides SNAP benefits that we're working on to give to our community. Students that are in need, there's free and reduced lunch programs, and right now, all of the lunches are free. So I hope I answered what you were asking with that, those questions.
Well, okay, can I just put it on the, on item 13? You say plus $1 million dollars...
Sir, your time is, your time is up.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. We'll be there in a couple of minutes, you'll come back.
Any other comments? Seeing none. All right. Okay, Dr. Massimino, do you have any recommendations?
Mr. President, I have 26 items to present to the board.
Make a motion to approve the superintendent's agenda?
Second.
I have motion by Mr. Trebusser, or second by Mr. Molnar. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. DeLaPietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Mr. President, I abstain from items 22 and 26, yes to all other items.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Trebusser?
Yes.
And Mr. Velez?
Yes. Policy and Planning Agenda, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Policy and Planning Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following 11 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion on Mr. Harris, do I have a second?
Second.
The motion, Mr. Harris, and second by Mr. Sedana. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. DeLaPietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Curriculum Agenda, Mr. Trebusser.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Curriculum Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction presents the following eight items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
A motion by Mr. Trebusser, do I have a second? I have a second by Ms. Bourdain, are there any comments or questions from the board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. DeLaPietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Trebusser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes. Finance and Insurance Agenda, Mr. Trebusser.
The Finance and Insurance Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following 15 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
A motion by Mr. Trebusser, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Sedana. Any comments or questions? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. DeLaPietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Trebusser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes. Security and School Safety Agenda, Mr. DeLaPietro.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Security and School Safety Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following three items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. DeLaPietro, second by Mr. Trebusser. Any comments or questions from the board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. DeLaPietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Trebusser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes. Technology Agenda, Mr. Sedana.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Technology Committee on the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following one item, I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion on Mr. Sedana, second by Mr. DeLaPietro. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. DeLaPietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Trebusser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes. Athletics and Extracurricular Agenda, Mr. Trebusser.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Athletic and Extracurricular Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction presents the following two items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
A motion by Mr. Trebusser, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Trebusser, second by Ms. DeLaPietro. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. DeLaPietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Trebusser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes. Transportation Agenda, Mr. DeLaPietro.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Transportation Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary present the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. DeLaPietro, second by Ms. Bourdain. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. DeLaPietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Trebusser?
Yes.
And Mr. Velez?
Yes. Cafeteria Agenda, Ms. Perez.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Cafeteria Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Ms. Perez.
Second.
Do I have a second? I have a second by Mr. Trebusser. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. DeLaPietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Trebusser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes. Equity Commission Agenda, Ms. Bourdain.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Equity Commission Committee on the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following four items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Ms. Bourdain, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion by Ms. Bourdain, second by Ms. Perez. Do I have any comments or questions from the board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. DeLaPietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treeboss?
Yes.
And Mr. Velez?
Yes. Personnel agenda, Mr. Molnar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Personnel Committee on the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources presents the following. Tonight, I'll be moving 58 items.
Motion by Mr. Molnar. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Molnar, seconded by Mr. Delapetro. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. Delapetro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
On items number 10 and 11, I'll be abstaining on the name Charlie Molnar. Yes on all other items.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treeboss?
Yes.
And Mr. Velez?
Yes. Mr. Bush, do you have any recommendations?
No, sir, thank you.
Is there any old business that should be brought to the attention of the board? Is there any new business that should be brought to the attention of the board?
Mr. President?
Mr. Harris?
Yes, I just had two things this evening. The district put this out by email, as well as on its Facebook. This Tuesday, February 22nd, is the annual winter meeting presented by the Woodbridge Township Presidents' Council. It's effectively a parent organization. It's open to all district parents to hear from the superintendent, hear from the mayor, hear from the Speaker of the General Assembly, and hear from several board members and other presenters on some, you know, just topical items related to the school district updates from the school district and the township. You are all invited, as parents, to sign up. You can sign up through the email that you receive. There's a Google Doc to submit questions that would be presented to some of the presenters. And when you sign up, you'll get the Zoom link, so you can participate virtually. It is a virtual program, begins at 7:00 p.m., and again, it is Tuesday, February 22nd, at 7:00 p.m. Make sure you sign up. All parents should have received an email from the district, I believe it was yesterday. And last but not least, it's an easy, fun one. A shout out and a good luck to our Woodbridge Township School District Hockey Team. Our three high schools have a combined hockey team tomorrow evening at 6:45 at the Woodbridge Community Center. The St. Joseph's, excuse me, I'm sorry, the Woodbridge Township School District will be playing the Monroe Township Hockey Team for the county championship. So good luck to that team, and I'm sure they'll appreciate spectators as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Mr. President, I'd just like to mention that the Woodbridge Library is promoting a Taking Charge of College series, and it's presented by GPS College on February 24th at 7:00. It's via Zoom, and you can visit the Woodbridge Library on their website to register.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Any other comments from the board?
Mr. Sedana, please.
Mr. President, thank you very much. I'd like to thank the Equity Commission, as well as Mr. Ali and the administration for an initiative that they collaborated with the community for the HSS organization. It's called the Health for Humanity Yogathon. That's happening on the 19th, the 26th, and the 5th of March. So the 19th is at Colonial Middle School, the 26th is at Island Middle School, the 5th of March is at Woodbridge High School. This has been an effort that has taken a while to come to fruition, but I would like to thank the administration and the Equity Commission for making this happen. And I really hope that everyone in the community attends. Again, it's called Health for Humanity Yogathon by Hindu Swamshivaak Sam. We have some people in the audience here that represent that organization. Looking forward to a more fruitful collaboration. So thank you, guys. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sedana. Are there any other board comments? Okay. We will now open the meeting for public comment. If you wish to say something, please come to the microphone, provide your name in the section of the township in which you reside for the record. Again, members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil manner, with due respect for the dignity and privacy of those legal rights may be impacted. Please limit your comments to no more than five minutes in accordance with Regulation 1100D. No responsibly given until you have fully completed all your comments. So it's not to interrupt you. Your five-minute opportunity to speak.
Good evening. Tom Maris, Forbes, New Jersey. I have some questions and comments. And first question is, under Oprah, and this may be something the board attorney may want to answer, is a response that the information can be found on the district's website satisfy an Oprah request? In other words, I asked for something specifically, and they tell me to go look somewhere else to get it instead of sending it to me as requested. That's one of the questions. As we all know, the governor has kicked the hot potato of masking right back at the school districts. I guess he's gotten a further education in political science and how to get himself out of that quagmire. And unfortunately, he has thrown it to school districts. Obviously, we're all keenly interested in knowing what this school district's going to do. Comes March 7th in regarding to masking requirements. Unfortunately, the masks did not work as well as they thought they were going to. In fact, they now come out and said, you really have to have clinical N95 mask to have any real benefit out of the things. But we do know that there's a lot of research now after stuffing kids and putting those things on the children's faces for an extended period of time, that it is causing mental and physical delayed development. It is harming them, and it will continue to harm them as long as they have to wear them, far more in excess of any benefit that they might derive out of staying away from or minimizing COVID. So I'd like to know if the school board is planning on removing those masks. Has it done so in concert with the union? And also with the, obviously, the teachers and the staff are affected by that as well. So I'm hoping that you will make the right decision. And it really comes down to it, it can be a matter of parental consent, which I'm very much in favor of. I think that's the right thing to do. And each parent can make a decision in concert with their child whether a child will or will not wear a mask. That said, however it comes down, I would hope the school would strictly enforce a no bullying policy, that any child wearing or not wearing a mask would not be bullied by anyone in the school, teacher or otherwise. Ditto for the teachers, ditto for the staff. It should be their right of choice if they're protected. It's up to them. Hopefully, you'll take that into consideration when you're going to make that decision. Another question I have is the mayor and the town council have been indicating for some point in time that further development will go along North James Street, and specifically, I'm concerned with 94 apartment units that are planned directly across from the new crown gem, if you will, of the school system. That's our Raw Street School. That will either be five or four or five stories high in the parking lot that now exists for the teachers, like I said, right across. When I last checked, the schools said they had not been approached to sell that property, nor they're going to yet. Seems the township fathers are going full bore with it. I know the contractors have been in touch with people in that area, looking for variances. So obviously, there's something afoot. My question to the board is, why would you sell that property to the school? Are you being forced to sell it? And if so, by whom? And how would that possibly benefit the safety and welfare of the children and of this community? They had 94 new apartments, five stories, plus a parking garage on the other side for 250 units. I hope you'll take that into serious consideration and reject any attempts to take over that property for development, for apartments, or anything else. Keep it a school property, keep it free, keep it open. It's safer for the children, safer for the teachers, and far more convenient. As to the DEI, several times I've been here, I've spoken to it, I've submitted many Oprahs, gotten some of the information I was looking for. Some of it was not exactly what I was expecting. I had to go back and ask more. But throughout that whole effort, I had had conversations here with the superintendent, and we had said that after I got the information, that we would sit down and discuss it. When I finally felt that I had enough information to make a intelligent commentary at a meeting with the superintendent and Mr. Ali, I was given, rather, in my opinion, terse response to my request for that meeting, is we're not meeting with you. We've given you the information via the Oprah request, and that was it. That certainly wasn't what I was led to believe. It was not what was said here in these meetings when you agreed to have those meetings with me. And I find it very disheartening, which gives then rise to the question of, are you really trying to hide something? What are you afraid to be asked? What could I ask you in a meeting that might be so detrimental that you can't come back and say, yeah, here we have our program, our curriculum together, and we can explain it to you? Again, I told you, I have run for office, I have had thousands of votes, and I still am in contact with many of those people that will come to me to ask questions. I try to respond to them.
Thank you, Mr. Maris.
Am I time up?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Perhaps somebody else can continue, but would you like to answer?
Your first question concerning the Oprah?
Yeah.
I'll direct Mr. Bush.
So, you know, Oprah is, I know you know, Mr. Maris, you're very familiar with Oprah. You use it as a tool all the time. It's certainly your right to make Oprah requests, but as you know, it's not an assignment of research to school district staff. So to answer your question specifically about being directed to a place, it's not that it's legal or not legal to ask someone to go elsewhere for information. If the information in a record exists, whether that record is online somewhere, for example, and you're directed to that record, then the Oprah request has been complied with. So to answer your question, in this case, it is legal.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Your question concerning the masks?
Mr. Maris, the governor's mandate will expire, meaning masks are no longer mandatory. The governor also stated that no school district can prevent students from wearing a mask. So the expectation is March 7th, students and parents will have the discussions they need to have with one another, and they will proceed accordingly with their comfort level. So if they choose that it's in their best interest to wear a mask, they should do so. If they feel that it's not in their best interest, they do not have to do so.
Wonderful.
DEI.
I'm going to comment on my email to you. I have no problem meeting with you, and I did meet with you. And I thought Mr. Ali and myself answered every question we could, and I tried to answer every question you could bring here. The email that you sent to me was basically your Oprah request, which is what you attached to your email meeting with me. So no, I'm not going to meet with you, Mr. Maris, when all you simply do is forward me an Oprah request that had already been responded to. I'm sure you didn't like the responses, and that's okay, but that doesn't mean that I was avoiding a meeting. I have a Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, so I don't know how I could be any more transparent about our commitment to diversity, equity, or inclusion besides the work that we're doing. My concern is that we don't highlight in these meetings enough of what we do well in terms of diversity, equity, and inclusion. So the insinuation that I'm hiding anything in terms of what we're doing, I don't think could be further from the truth.
If I may, when I ask you to meet?
So your time is done.
Okay, thank you. Kind of answers I'm learning to expect from this board. Thank you.
Paul Lund, Hope Lund. I want to be more specific. I don't know if this is the time for it, but the concept of diversity, equity, and inclusion, what does that look like to be for it? I mean, diversity comes with a territory. You have diversity of race, of culture, of religion. Even individuals in a family can be considered diverse. So what does that look like? And is it a mountain with no top? Is it work that's always in progress? Or is it a stopgap measure to enlighten who needs to be enlightened and then move on? Is that your?
I don't want to respond until you're done with your question, sir.
Okay. The second question is, I'm concerned that there is such a hyper-focus on race. As I understand it, and this is my most simple, basic understanding, is that you have oppressors and you have the oppressed. It seems to me that DEI can tend to exacerbate problems and perpetuate a victim mentality where there doesn't have to be one. I was working at a school in Hoboken where we were going through books, nursery rhymes, and, you know, of course, they're trying to cancel Dr. Seuss, and just looking for racism and boogeymen everywhere. It just feels like a bit much. And so that's my concern around DEI. And that would be the balance of my question.
So I'm going to allow our Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion to respond to your question, sir.
Good evening. I think in short, the spirit and intent of diversity, equity, and inclusion is to create a space where all students, regardless of their background, feel seen, heard, and included in their studies.
Okay. Would that include, let's say, heteronormative Christian males?
I want to just jump in, because I don't know that we're understanding this right. And I want to be respectful of the fact that, I haven't seen you very many times in meetings, and I want to make sure that we're clear. There's a, Ms. Rooney, if you could just turn it, yeah. I'm going to give you the balance of your time.
Thank you.
The members of the public have five minutes to address the board. So if you have questions, ask them, right? Like, ask them. And whoever's responsible for answering those questions, if we can, we will respond. Sometimes we can't, but hopefully, more than not, we can. If you have comments, that's for you to, that's during your time. But what happens is sometimes you start asking questions, and then while we're answering your questions, it's cutting into your time.